Ten A, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article One in General Section 10.3. Trevor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Spurgeon. At the last council meeting, staff was directed to revise and update the existing fireworks ordinance. By way of history, City Ordinance Section 10-3 currently allows persons within the city limits to discharge fireworks from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. only on July 3rd and 4th, and after they have obtained a permit from the city at a cost set forth in the manual fees. This was passed originally by ordinance number 2676 on December 20th of 2004, and allowed for the sale and discharge of fireworks with a $20 permit. On August 21st of 2006, City Council passed ordinance number 2822, calling an election on the following question. One, shall the city of Broken Arrow allow fireworks to be discharged by individuals with a permit within the city of Broken Arrow? And the ballot question did not list the amount of the permit, but it did ask if fireworks should be discharged with the permit issued by the city. Special election was held on November 7th of 2006, so that gave rise to the current ordinance. The changes that we had made was to remove the permit requirement and the fee requirement. And so if you look at the specific changes, specifically that Section 10-3 subsection A, it states that the discharge of fireworks shall be unlawful within the city unless done in accordance with the provisions of Section 10-3E. And that, and we'll go over that in a moment, but please note that we have left the permit requirement for the commercial public displays, similar to what you would see at the New Orleans Square. You're talking about a different class of fireworks, commercial type fireworks. We've left the provisions in there for the fire marshal to be involved, for the permitting, for the bond requirements on that, so none of that has changed. In subsection C, we did just clarify what permissible fireworks were. So we're talking about Class 1.4G fireworks, also known as common fireworks, and then the larger class, which is the DOT special fireworks, Class 1.3G. Again, those are, that would be permitted for this commercial, for this commercial fireworks displays. Moving down to subsection D, it just specifically says that currently the sale or display of, or sale of fireworks is still unlawful within the city. I know that there was discussions about potential future changes on that, but that currently remains in place as a prohibition. If you go down to E, speaking about the prohibition, so while the permits and the fees are removed, there's still a prohibition that persons within the city limits may use or otherwise discharge permissible fireworks only from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on July 3rd and 4th. And there are currently, the conditions that we currently have are also in there. So for example, it's still unlawful to explode or ignite fireworks within 500 feet of a church, hospital, asylum, unharvested, flammable agricultural crop, or public school. Those provisions have remained the same, so they haven't been removed about the location. If this body would like to remove those, they certainly can. Under subsection two, that's where we have the permit requirement, and that has been completely removed. Also, under subsection three, we completely removed the requirement that the permit holder be physically present at the household and be within 60 feet of the front door of the permitted residence. Since we're not issuing permits that are tied to a geographic location, we've removed that requirement in there. We did leave the requirement that the person who sets off the fireworks is required to remove the debris. There is a fine of $225 if they fail to do that. In addition, under subsection four, we did add that private persons may not use or discharge fireworks on any city or county property. So that would clarify that, for example, you couldn't go to the city hall parking lot and set off fireworks at that location. The fine remains the same at $225 for violations of the section. However, we have remained to double the fine, which currently reads, for any use of fireworks between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., the fine is doubled what the fine normally is imposed. And we've kept the provision in there that if the governor calls a red flag fire alert, then the use of fireworks during that time would be illegal, obviously from the fire danger. So that's a quick overview of what the changes were. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
I have a few questions. Okay, where does it list the large displays? Because, I mean, because the way it reads right now...
Yeah, so under 13-3A, supervised public displays, so the...
Oh, it's under 13?
I'm sorry, 10-3A, Section 10-3A, so if you look at the very first, under manufacturer sale, manufacturer sale, use, et cetera fireworks. It's the second sentence, supervised public displays.
Okay.
And that's what we're discussing, so that's not, it's different from the use of common fireworks by just any individual. So if you're using commercial grade fireworks at the New Orleans Square, you'll have to follow this procedure.
Okay. And, okay, that makes sense, because when I saw that, I was thinking that could apply to, like, anybody doing a big public display, but it's using those specific larger fireworks.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do have a thought, I mean, don't a lot of churches do these, like, on their property?
Kind of like Rockets Over Raina, they did, yes.
Well, and so, one of the things, I mean, one of churches is on here is where you can't do fireworks.
So at least with Rockets Over Raina, those are permitted commercial activities, so that would have been done with our fire marshal, that's a separate provision. You know, the subsection one, as far as how that has worked, that's been in our law since, I think, 2004. Again, if there's any changes that you want to make to those specific locations, we can...
So it doesn't sound like they can't do it, they just have to get a commercial permit?
They would have to get a commercial permit.
Right, if they're going to do a commercial show for individuals who just want to individually set off their own fireworks, that's currently in the law, it says it shall be unlawful to explode or ignite fireworks within 500 feet of the church, hospital, asylum, unharvested, flammable agricultural crop.
Do we have an asylum?
I want to know where that is.
Where is that?
I don't, in case somebody tries to take me there, I'm going to say no.
No, I'm not going.
I'm not going.
I know you also mentioned city properties, that include streets and sidewalks?
No, that's not going to include the streets and sidewalks, and we can clarify that language if you'd like. The intent of that section is, you know, fee simple owned property, such as our parking lot, coming here to city hall, for example, but within the streets, that's allowed under the ordinance.
I don't think it would be a bad thing to clarify that it's okay to still do it, at least on streets, I don't know about sidewalks, but, I don't know. I mean, because like you said, that's still city property, the streets.
If you'd like, we can remove the city property language.
Well, I think we need to keep, I mean, because we don't want them to be at city hall blowing off fireworks. I don't know what's...
And people use, I mean, are we saying we can't do it on sidewalks?
It's city property, that's why we need clarification.
I think...
I think if we just clarify that.
Sure, and we can work on that language, so, like I said, that was on, let me see, where we put that?
Section...
It talks about a private person firing it off on a road over 26 feet wide.
Item four, E4.
Oh, here, I was looking at the wrong sheet. Uh, yeah.
That's pretty broad.
Yeah, E4. So it says, private persons may not use or discharge fireworks within a city or county prop, county park property, nor on any highway, turnpike, or any street that has paving in excess of 26 feet wide, such as an arterial street or collector street. So that's very specific about the street, so as long as it's not in excess of 26 feet wide, like an arterial or collector street, they can use the fireworks there. We can just say, if you want to clarify the property, we could say, we could give examples of city property, such as, you know, buildings and city-owned parking lots, if that's, that would help clarify.
I'm reading it that you can't do it on anything that's paved more than 26 feet.
In excess, in excess, right. So if it's larger than 26 feet, such as an arterial street, and that's what the current ordinance says, and so if you want to remove or change that, we certainly can as well.
So I would, that to me reads that you could still do it on a subdivision street or a sidewalk.
Well, you'd be more likely to have traffic, though, on a larger street, so it looks like that we need to leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I think we, I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, I think it's fine the way it is.
And I think this would be something we can talk about if we decide that we want to allow people to sell, is that, I had a question about the $750, because I just wasn't sure how much it costs normally to get a license, an annual license, but for different businesses.
On DE8.
Yeah, but that would be something we would talk about.
If we decided.
Yeah. So, this was put in there, I'm reading this, for if there's people, someone in the county that gets annexed into the city, and they've been selling fireworks, we can let them continue to sell fireworks for two, up to two years, well, two seasons, following their annexation. This had to have been written for someone specifically, it seems like, that we annexed their property in.
My understanding from speaking with Farhad Drogo, who's been here and is our resident historian, that at the time, we had several existing fireworks stands that were basically grandfathered in. My understanding is none of those currently operate, so...
Okay. I do want to revisit that, but not for this, I don't think we can get it done this year, so.
Well, the plan is to actually put something together this late this summer, this fall, and bring it to the governing body to look at.
I had one more thing that was brought to me regarding fireworks, well, a lot of things, but one thing I'll mention. Folks were talking about the possibility of putting in this proposed new ordinance to allow them to be shot off during New Year's Eve. I don't know if it's something we want to consider or been thought about, but it has been brought up several times.
I like New Year's Eve. I'd be for it.
Just a thought.
Anybody else? Nobody else is for it?
I don't, I'm either way.
I don't know that I have a thought either way either.
If it's just one more night of the, of the year.
Maybe better than doing it in the country, you can go out and shoot guns in the air, and have bullets falling down on everybody's head.
That's what they're shooting, that's what they're doing now.
The fire chief would like that, wouldn't you?
He's like, no.
That's a standard answer.
We appreciate the preview.
Yes.
Go from there.
Okay. So I do have two people who want to speak, so I'll allow them to speak first. Teresa and Mark Stewart.
Actually, it's just me.
Oh, okay.
He couldn't come. He asked me to speak for him. He really did, actually. So, I am a child that lived in California, and I love fireworks. I'll start with that. But I also know that we have a lot of veterans in our community, and we also have a lot of people that have cancer with PTSD. And so I'm going to speak a little bit from that perspective, and I hope you all hear my heart, because I know veterans that unfortunately are taking THC on a day when they have to deal with fireworks, because for them, it's a totally different ballgame than what we deal with. And I sent this to Michael and Christie, actually, last year, and I said, thank you for listening, because I'm just one perspective, but I hope you hear my perspective and my heart. This is called L-theanine, this is called GABA. I have to give it to my little dogs, this is my Cocker Spaniel, her name is Bailey, and she is a precious little dog, and she hovers in my, for three days, I have to shut down everything I'm doing, and I have to sit on my couch with her shaking, and I have to give her medication because of the trauma that she deals with. Now we've got veterans that are dealing with that trauma, and I'm one that loves a good firework. I grew up in California. But what I would like to see is, I would like us to look at Salt Lake City, I would like us to look at Boulder, Colorado, I would like us to look at some of the ones that I've sent you all in the past, Los Angeles, and, you know, Oklahoma City doesn't allow fireworks within their community, and I want to show you this, and you're not going to all be able to see it, but this is a firework last year that blew up in my area, and we live in a cul-de-sac, and unfortunately, it's only one second long, but you can see it blowing up in this, and I don't know if you all can see it, but I'm going to show you. Could you hear that? That firework blew up, and there were children right there in the cul-de-sac. I asked my husband how far that was from our home, and he said it was about 50 feet. And unfortunately, that's where we live. Now, when we lived on Delmar and Stacy Lynn, when they were not allowed in city limits, we had a fire, and thank God that we were home, because in the back where those new homes are in the field behind Delmar, that had been there for several years, that's where the fire was. We called the police, or the fire station, and they weren't allowed to do them, but unfortunately, they did. And it was a good thing we were home and we had our blinds, because my husband had to get the hose and he had to put it on the fence. So I'm only one of, I'm not trying to complain, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but I'd like you to consider other alternatives. What if we could have an amazing drone show to make the money up for the city that the city would maybe lose on the permits? What if we could think, forward-thinking of what new cities are actually doing to help our vets and to help cancer patients? My husband has to take medication. So anyway, if you guys could think about that, I would so appreciate your kindness, because I know that there's other people that didn't get to speak tonight. I think the safety issues, we could look at Piedmont and some other ones. Anyway, thank you for listening, and thank you for meeting my little dogs, because I know there's a lot in our community that deal with the same thing.
Yes, thank you so much. David Oldham.
I rise tonight to commend you for the direction that I've heard this discussion going. I'm sorry I couldn't stay two weeks ago and speak at that point in time, but I did listen as I was driving off to a work thing that I had, and I was very pleasantly surprised by the direction of the conversation. I think we have a lot more work to do, I think what we have is a good working model. My biggest concern is prohibitions. As you know, a lot of times, I'm standing up here, and problem is prohibition, somebody telling somebody else they can't, when in reality, it works the other way around. Just to remind, the board's position is to create standards, so that we don't get explosions or that are running amok, or if we do, that people are held appropriately responsible, so held responsible that they never want to make that mistake again. And I would hope that that would be the direction rather than prohibition. And let's remember, every single permit, license, et cetera, starts with abject deprivation, abject prohibition, then you have to buy your rights back. That is every single one, but that is, and then there was even words thrown around, shall we allow? I'm sorry. Wrong way around thinking. I know it's typical, but wrong way around thinking. So let's continue to work on it, let's get this done, but let's continue to work on it. The other thing is, we all are Americans in this area, whether you, even if you're of Native American heritage, you are an American citizen. This is the 100th anniversary of Native Americans being granted U.S. citizenship. So for 100 years, we have all been the same, but we have to pay, I would have to pay a $750 fee, because I'm not Native American, whereas the Native Americans get to sell on their land for nothing. So we've got to make sure that, that our, that all of the laws and the treatment of everybody is exactly the same. So I would be, I love the parts where we are actually doing the regulation, like, you got to, you got to maintain things in good order, do it on a hard surface, don't catch other people's stuff on fire, okay? That's all proper. But the saying we can't do it, that's a problem, that there are limits on timeframes in terms of limits, you know, after 11 o'clock, that's perfectly valid, because other people have rights. And, but, there's Chinese New Year, there's New Year, there's New Years here, there are probably going to be other times that fireworks, fireworks are going to, we should be allowing, and I put that in air quotes, okay? So I would like you to think about a lot of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think what I, and what I heard you saying, and not David, but Madam, is some of the things that we're doing, I actually, they are empowering our police more, because now, we, because we don't have to pay to have a permit and ask the permission of the government to do fireworks, police just know, if you're shooting fireworks off after 11:00 p.m. and before, whatever time, in that middle of the night, you're going to get an extra fine, you're going to get even, even more trouble. If you are, you know, if you're doing fireworks on different times, like, of the day, like, outside of July 3rd and 4th, we don't have to look and see if you have a permit or not, we can enforce the law. And I, to me, it's better for our police department, because we didn't change anything as far as when you could do fireworks. All we did is make it easier for police to enforce our laws, because it's, they don't have to check, did you get permission to do this? Everyone has permission, if you're doing it, you just need to obey the rules. Unless you're under 12, without a parent.
Without a parent. I think the only, the thing with the maintaining a permit, it does give us the ability to reinforce our ordinance on it and educate people on reminder of when the dates are, setting the standard of when it's proper.
Yeah, and I think we need to communicate it better.
Yeah, well, we don't have a newspaper anymore, we don't have news, we don't have things to mail out to people anymore, so there's, not everyone's on social media.
I agree with you, but I think you need a permit also to have somebody that is responsible, you know what I mean, for it. Now, I'm opposed to paying, and we don't make a lot of money off the permits, you know, I'm not for that, but at least have a permit of somebody that's in charge, so really, the only way I'm in favor of it, and you're going to have a lot more complaints from people that don't want the fireworks, but I think that we need to have a permit system, similar to what we did have, and have the rules and regulations, you know, on that, on that permit, so that they would make sure they know that.
I think we can get out the information to the people selling the fireworks for rules, you know, ask them to put them out with whatever, I mean, they won't, or, I mean, they will or won't, I mean, it's, but I think we can get the information out through social media, through the, our utility bill that we do mail out, and I don't know that, you know, when people have gone online, I think they go online, they pay the fee, they hit yes, and they move on. I don't think they look at that. I think it's up to us to put that out there via all the avenues that we use right now, and be done with the permit.
Is there a Chief Berryhill or Chief Moore, is there any, what's the pros and cons of having that standard in place?
Like, having a permit and not having a permit?
Not having a permit.
Not talking about paying for it, just having a permit. Come on down, Chief Berryhill, would it be better to have a permit with no fee for enforcement for the police?
Setting the standard.
I think that's what the mayor's tried to ask, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So did you were talking about fireworks?
So do we.
Let's stop talking about it and just do away with it. If we do away with the permit, we don't have to talk about it anymore. How about that?
I'm for that. Okay, so what's the question?
Will it make it easier for you to enforce with or without a permit?
So...
That's what I'm hearing.
You still have to catch the person using the fireworks, so we're still in the same boat of, if someone calls, or we'll have patrols out there for the off hours, so we're no longer going to have patrols out there during the times when it's allowable, because there's nothing that's illegal, unless it's something that's, you know, concerning for the fire chief. So that part, we won't have to worry about. Outside the, outside the hours where it's not permissible, you're still going to have to have people out there enforcing after 11 o'clock at night. You still run into the same problem of seeing the person doing it, you have to see it with your own eyes to write a ticket for something, to write a ticket. It's not committed in your presence, you still have to have someone sign the back of the ticket, it's called will file, or citizen's arrest, but you're not arresting the person. So the enforcement part of it, still, you have to have eyes on when it happens, so you're still going to have to witness the action. Before, when the permit was here, you had to witness the action, then ask if they have a permit, now it's just witness the action outside the hours where it's allowable.
Because then they're violating the already, the ordinance itself, so...
Yeah, so after 11 o'clock, someone calls in and says they're using fireworks, unless you're standing right there when it happens, and you drive your, let's say you're like four blocks away, you get there, they're not popping the fireworks, you can't do anything. And they say, well, they are in that house right there, you walk up, knock on the door, are you firing fireworks? They're going to say, no. And then you go to the neighbor and say, do you want to sign the ticket? And they're going to say, no. And so you're still not going to be able to issue the citation, so you're going to have to witness in real time to write up a citation.
Wouldn't that be the same way, too, for the debris that's left? If you don't see them popping it? I mean, how are we going to enforce that, the $225 fee, if they don't pick up their trash? Because the officers would have to see them leaving the trash there after they pop the fireworks, you know what I mean?
I think Jerry Schuber can answer that question, since it's a solid... It's the same problem, so who separates what debris?
I mean, because even if they had a permit, even though they didn't have to pay for the permit, and they had debris in front of their house, the police would still have to see, or a citizen could sign the back of a ticket, saying that, I saw them pop the fireworks, and that's their debris that's there, and they would go to court to say that for the $225 fine.
So this being the first year, I can't tell you if there's going to be more after hours than there was last year, that's something that we won't know until after this year's over.
I mean, I do feel for, for our veterans, as we all do, and for the animals, because we know, city of Broken Arrow, we have a lot of animals in this city. I just still feel like we need to keep it, like, from 3 to 11, because then, if you don't, I'm afraid it's just going to be willy-nilly all week long, if not two weeks long, so at least they know they have that timeframe.
Yeah, we're not changing the time.
Yeah, and I don't care about if they have to pay for it or if they don't have to pay for it. I mean, I'm okay with them not paying for it. I still kind of feel like the permit thing and the education piece is important, and if they think they may even have to pay $225 for not picking up their trash.
So, but here's the thing that makes no sense about it, though, is people are doing it without a permit regardless, and so we need to educate everyone. Now, we're, like, we're going to pat ourselves on the back and say we did a great job, because we educated these people, these, the people that said, yes, I will, I will jump through your government hoop, you get educated on how to do fireworks. But everyone else, we feel good about ourselves now that we gave you education, we should be educating everybody. It's our, our job as a city to educate everyone on safety.
Well, and I think that's going to happen, I don't think we're...
People who jumped through the hoop and got the permit.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do it just if they get a permit, and we're going to be secret the rest of our social media, I think.
No, but, so, but it's like, we need to give it to everybody, I don't, it's, it's not, they're not going to be more educated because they got the permit. And, because I've thought about this a lot, because I thought about it the same way as you did, and I thought, everyone needs to know. Like, I mean, we don't, we need to make it a purpose, that we're sending out all the data, we're sending it out in the utility bill, we're sending it out on social media, it's on our website, we're sharing it. I mean, what else can we do? I mean, we can't, we can't legislate common sense. I mean, but what we can do is do our best to help the people make good decisions.
I get the permit, because I'm a law-abiding citizen, but I don't read the permit, I just get the permit and give them my $25.
That's the thing, we're jumping through a hoop, and it's, that's...
Just don't read it, be honest.
Some of us are rule followers, some of us are.
Do you vote, do you allow the force to be...
I am a rule follower, that's why I don't like this.
We'll still be talking about it.
Yeah.
And for the record, I think Bullseye looks like a younger version of Chief. I think they may model that after you.
Yeah, I don't have the body for spandex. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the body for spandex.
Younger version.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
Can you hold your thumb up like this?
I wanted to take a picture.
I did it quick.
Well, you need to hear from the fire chief as well, are we over it?
Excuse me, Mayor.
We have Mr. Stevens has a...
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
She has one question that she wanted to know if she could ask.
Uh, yes, you may ask one question.
Thank you, I know this is a hot topic, literally. So I think that we need to also look at, like, how many dogs end up in the kennels? Do we know? Or how many fires do we have that, that the firemen are having to put out? And why can't we look at a win-win solution possibly? I just think it's one-sided right now, because of the revenue that the city gets, and that may not be the case.
Yeah, we're not having revenue.
Awesome. Because I was thinking, why can't we have alternatives to teach new ways? Because you guys mentioned that. Why can't we look at the cost of the fires and the property damage? They all would know that. We should have rights, too. I heard that man at the beginning after me say that there should be rights. Families with cancer and families that deal with the trauma, we should be able to have an alternative like the drone shows, where all of the families can go safely to a city program that could be spectacular, that word spectacular. Our city could stand out like the other cities are now standing out. Because as we know, Oklahoma City doesn't allow this. We know that other cities don't allow it. But what if we could be more forward-thinking in this and make it a win-win for everyone? Is my suggestion.
Did you know, I mean, the city has voted, the citizens voted to allow fireworks in our city. We can't make a decision, I mean, the citizens voted for that.
Okay, then I want to say, if we're going to allow 500 feet of fireworks within the city, I would like to make that one suggestion on changing that to also say, "We live in a cul-de-sac." My husband told me that was about less than 200 feet away from our property. One was shot over our fence, and our dog got it. What if my dog died from that rocket? It was one of those rocket ones. I had a picture of it, and I kept it for almost a year. It shot over my yard, talking about cleanup, that person can't clean it up, it shot over in my yard. And my dog literally could have died if it swallowed it. Then whose rights are those? I don't get rights then, because that came over in my yard, and I don't have a say in that. And my dog could have died. My friend's dog did die in Hawaii for the very reason, it got scared and jumped the fence and got hit by a car.
I think that's when you talk to your neighbors and you have actual conversations with neighbors.
We try.
Yeah.
But in the cul-de-sac, but in the cul-de-sac, when you say, can we, can you make a change in the ordinance? When you say so much, can we say also in the cul-de-sacs, because...
There's people in cul-de-sacs that want to shoot off fireworks, so...
Well, what happens if we have a fire on our roof? Then who's liable?
It's not closer than 25 feet from any permanent structure.
Right, and so my husband said, "It's less than 200 feet, but we had it shot over." Those roman candles, as you know, go pretty far. So maybe there needs to be some stipulations then about the roman candles possibly. Just a thought. Because they are dangerous, and they do go over roofs.
Thank you for your question.
Yeah, we'll take that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, any further questions or discussion?
I think that was a good preview.
Yeah.
Trevor, do you want to, do you have any other questions for me?
Well, I think we need to be more clear on, on allowing, like, what we're doing about the actual permit.
Right, the request is just as directed by council. We requested to change the language for the permit and the fees, that's what we've done. And so it's really up to council to either, you know, set the preview ordinance for adoption, or set it for adoption with changes, or to leave it the way it is. And council, the council really does have plenary power here, this is a police power issue. You're not restricted, I mean, you have a whole, the whole choice of options here.
Well, my choice is no permit, no fee.
City manager, do you have anything that you'd want to add as far as...
No, I mean, I mean, I, I think the education is very important, and...
I agree, I agree.
And I think does the fire department, you guys put out, do you put out information, that information out?
So, there's office, yeah.
Okay, well, you should probably push it out through your social media, police's like, social media, just all the, all the resources.
You know, we could even get with the fireworks retailers and put up some education stuff there, some signage with education. Put some flyers out.
And just drag them around and go, hop in and heat them a flyer?
Put a sign out, make them read it.
Stand out front.
You know, Johnny doesn't shoot fireworks, so he's good time. He's, he is at-large counselor, so he can get at-large around the fireworks stands.
I'd tell him not to buy them.
Well, it really should be on the person, the people selling, and I realize a lot of who's selling it in our city are on, or everyone selling in our city are on tribal lands, but there's not that many. I mean, there's really not that many.
But that doesn't mean that they won't help us educate, I mean...
That's what I mean.
And the fireworks that are sold have education on them.
Yeah.
They come with directions.
Yeah. But it comes with the directions to how to shoot off the fireworks, not what our ordinance is.
Right.
Is there a motion?
I, well, I will make the motion that we, as we, I mean, everything that we've talked about, but minus the fee and minus the permit. And we will, I mean, we don't have to put this in the ordinance, but with the knowledge that we are going to be proactive in educating the public about firework safety.
Yeah, this already has no fee in it, right?
Uh, correct, per the direction last...
So the only thing would be deleting or leaving the permit.
And that's deleted as well in this version.
Okay, so it's both, both are, aren't in there, so I'll make the motion to approve item A.
Motion and second, roll call.
Second, there we go.
I was like, I don't see a second.
Does this mean we're not talking about fireworks anymore?
No, I'm sure this will not be the end.
Okay, great, fantastic. Okay.